If you would please silence your phones and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious Father, how we do thank you, Lord God, for another day. We thank you, Lord God, for another opportunity, God, to not only to give your name glory on it and praise God, but to to stand, God, in the gap, God, for so many individuals, God, who who need your guidance and for your understanding, God. But as we pray on today, God, we pray, God, for our mayor, God, we pray for every present leader, God, we pray for all the precincts that are represented here on today, God. We pray, God, that you will continue to put your hand of mercy, God, wrap your arms around each and every one of us, God, in this community, God, because, God, we need you. We need you in every decision that is going to be made, God, every situation, God, that needs to be taken care of, God, but most importantly, God, for every citizen, God, in Beaumont, Texas, God. God, I know right now, God, that there are so many things going on, God, but in the midst of everything that's going on, God, your word declares, God, that you're still sitting on the throne, God, and because of that, God, you sit high, God, you look down low, God, you see every situation, God, you know every rule, every regulation, God, you know who's in, who's out, God, you know all the rules that are going to be coming forth, God, in such a way, God, that you might already prepare your people, God, for such a time as this, God. So, God, right now, God, continue to watch over every leader, God, especially, God, our mayor, God, continue to put your heads of protection around them, God, so that the decisions that are going to be made, God, are going to be done in such a way, God, where every God, everybody, God, can benefit, God, by the rules that and regulations of this city and this nation, God. We thank you once again for guiding us and leading us, God, and keeping us, God, but most importantly, God, continue to use us, God, in your divine plan. Once again, we thank you for this day, God, we thank you for everyone that's here on today, in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all. Well, I love it when we have standing room only. Welcome, everyone. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Felschaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Okay, today we have three proclamations. We're going to have Tina Brusart, the city clerk, read some of the proclamations. After they're read, I'll announce your names so that you can, and any members of the group that is with you are welcome to come up to the podium, shake the hand of the council people, and also take pictures in front of the desk here. First proclamation is recognizing September 22nd as Southeast Texas Veterans Stand Down Day. Councilman Durio will be reading the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Southeast Texas Stand Down is designed to bring a wide range of pre-existing specialized resources together at one location for homeless veterans so they can create an attainable plan for reentry into mainstream society. And whereas stand down is a term used in times of war in which exhausted combat units come off the battlefield to rest and recover in a place of safety. And whereas, according to the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs, the first stand down was organized in 1988 by a group of Vietnam veterans in San Diego, California. And whereas today there are several community-based programs that provide and assist the homeless and near homeless veterans transition to community living by providing access to human services agencies, including benefits counseling, social security and veterans, employment and training assistance, healthcare screenings, housing services, legal assistance, mental health treatment, and substance abuse counseling. And whereas the Southeast Texas Stand Down Committee, in partnership with the Southeast Texas Veterans for Veterans, holds a Southeast Texas Stand Down every year for homeless veterans, their families, and others in need. Now therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim September 22nd, 2023, as Southeast Texas Veterans Stand Down Day in Beaumont, and encourage all citizens to give back to our community by reaching out to help and support this humanitarian mission. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set his hand and caused the seal of Beaumont to be affixed. Signed, Roy West, Mayor, September 19th, 2023.
Accepting today will be Seth Wells, and Seth, anybody that is with you, feel free to have them come up as well.
Mr. Mayor, council, and staff, thank you very much, and ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. We certainly appreciate, again, our civic partners, where as residents of Jefferson County, we're very proud that Jefferson County is the only county in Southeast Texas that hosts two veteran stand downs every year, one in Port Arthur and one in Beaumont. We've seen over 800 of our brothers and sisters this year already at Port Arthur and Orange, and we hope to have over 600 join us again this year at Beaumont. And what we do is, is we coordinate services, we gather services together, we get VA education, VA health, VA, what else do they say they give us, housing, and then things like that. And believe it or not, those entities don't speak, so we get them all together in one room so a person can get more holistic care. One of the reasons why we do this is not too much different than we just celebrated POW MIA Day on Friday. We have brothers and sisters out there that are lost, and we don't know where they are. Even if we do know where they are, they might not know where they are. So it is our job as fellow veterans and veteran advocates to go out there and find them and bring them to the resources. We can't fill their pantry every month, we can't pay their utility bills every month, we can't keep them employed, but we can give them access to those things and to services that they earned from their service, no matter, we all make mistakes, we all make bad decisions when we leave the service, because that transition time is extremely difficult. My wife was a Transition Assistance Program teacher, so she taught most of the transition classes that you required to take as a military member exiting service in San Diego. And I had a college degree, I had employment, and it was still a very difficult transition, because you don't only lose all of those things in day-to-day life, you lose a purpose. I knew when I woke up in the morning what I was going to do, I was going to go serve my country, I was going to wear my uniform, and you lose some of that. So some of our brothers and sisters out there need to find that purpose, and that's what we do with these stand downs and all these wonderful people that are here to help us do that, veterans and non-veterans alike, because we can't do it by ourselves. So we sincerely appreciate the community's support, and I can't say enough about this fantastic group of people that take time out of their schedules and use their own money and their own time and time away from work to help our fellow veterans, so we sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, y'all, one, two, three. You got one more. All right, one, two, and three.
Next is a proclamation recognizing September and October as National Ovarian and Breast Cancer Awareness Months. Accepting will be after Tina reads the proclamation.
I just ask everyone to bear with me, as my mother just passed in January from breast cancer, so I'll try to get through this as best I can. Whereas September and October are National Ovarian and Breast Cancer Awareness Months with campaigns established to heighten information on the risk and symptoms of these diseases to advance early detection and intervention. Ovarian cancer is known as a silent disease and is the fifth-leading cause of cancer deaths of women in the United States, and causes more deaths than any other gynecologic cancer. Gift of Life's Julie Richardson Proctor Ovarian Cancer Awareness Program focuses on strategies and information to affect real change and save lives. Breast cancer is the most common cancer among American women, except for skin cancers, and approximately one in eight women in the U.S. will develop invasive breast cancer during their lifetime. This year, it is estimated that more than 315,000 women will be diagnosed with either breast or ovarian cancer, and nearly 57,000 women will die from these diseases in the United States. It is vital that Southeast Texans are educated about breast cancer and the availability of free mammograms for women who cannot afford health insurance through Gift of Life Women's Breast Health and Cancer Prevention Programs. Gift of Life annually provides at no charge thousands of breast cancer screenings, diagnostic mammograms, ultrasounds, and biopsies with access to cancer treatment to medically underserved Southeast Texas women. Gift of Life has helped diagnose breast cancer in more than 275 women through its life-saving medical services. Gift of Life will host the 13th Annual Julie Richardson Proctor 5K Ribbon Run, Monsterr Dash in downtown Beaumont on Saturday, October 28th, to heighten awareness of breast and ovarian cancer throughout Southeast Texas, while also raising funds for its provisions and prevention and educational outreach. Now therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, as Gift of Life Breast and Ovarian Cancer Awareness Day in Beaumont, and urge all women in our community to pursue preventative health practices and early detection efforts. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set his hand and caused the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed. Signed, Roy West, September 19th, 2023. And accepting will be... You'll announce.
Yes, will be Ms. Norma Sampson, Director of Gift of Life, and Ms. Regina Rogers, the founder, and the rest of the group, that yes, you can bring everybody, yes.
Okay, so y'all are hiding where they're... Is Officer Morrow? Join us?
Touch my heart.
Need to. Okay, we're not going to cry. We're going to get through this.
You're going to do it.
Thank you so much, Mayor, council members, and everyone for sharing that proclamation and allowing us to be with you today. It's hard to believe it's the 13th year that we've been hosting this ribbon run. For some of you, and so many have been supporting our cause, this started with Julie Richardson Proctor, who at the young age of 51 succumbed to ovarian cancer. She had insurance, but the risk and symptoms were simply just not publicized, and even from her physicians and so many of her healthcare providers, she was not aware. And her vision, her dream before she left was to simply have a way to perpetuate this initiative to allow other women in our community to know about the risk and symptoms. And with Regina Rogers, Patty McSpadden, and Melody Parsons, they initiated the Julie Richardson Proctor Ovarian Cancer Awareness Initiative, and then also kind of catapulted us into this 5K, more of a walk than a run, for us to be able to use that platform to heighten awareness of the risk and symptoms of ovarian cancer, and then poignantly for us to begin bringing that also into our Women's Breast Health Services. As you said in this proclamation, there are still so many women, one in eight will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and our initiative just this year with your support has been able to diagnose nine Southeast Texas women with breast cancer. As many of you know, we've been here for 30 years, the Gift of Life. We're local, it's a nonprofit organization, all the funding stays in Southeast Texas. Businesses and individuals like the council support our initiatives that allow us each year to provide these free breast health services, and they're for women who simply can't afford insurance and meet the income guidelines associated with the poverty levels. So our heartfelt appreciation to you for this opportunity to talk about our services to heighten awareness. We've got free screenings throughout the year, we have a breast cancer support group, we also have a class that's free, underwritten by a grant that we received called Active Living After Cancer. That's for anyone, men or women, who have survived cancer, and it's a poignant, empowering class that teaches you nutrition and also importantly gets you active. And what we've seen is that it's been a platform of camaraderie and support when people need it the most, when they've just overcome the regular routine doctor visits, and they've had this network that's been going on every month, and then it ends. So our program is there in so many areas, education as well as the direct medical services. With me today are, they're our Gift of Life family, there's so much of an extension of people that are supporting us, and it's our officers, our angels among us, our Baptist Hospital representatives, and people like yourselves that collaboratively support our initiatives and help us remain sustainable. As you said in the proclamation, and we handed it out to everyone, we hope you will lace up to save lives and join us on October the 28th for our walk-run in downtown Beaumont. We also have an opportunity for anyone who's a breast, ovarian, gynecological cancer survivor, they're our guest. We mailed out this, please be our guest, to anyone who's a survivor, to join us at no cost and participate in our Wellness Village, our Celebration of Hope, and our costume contest. So if I could read, if you don't mind, Regina, you had said she had hoped to be here, Mayor, and she was, if you didn't get a call, she was always so apologetic that she couldn't be here. She'd given me a statement to read. May I share that with you?
Ma'am.
Okay, thank you. This is from Regina Rogers. It is with much disappointment and regret that I can't attend today's proclamation due to a very important commitment in Houston. She wanted to extend her deep appreciation to each one of you and everyone here, as well as our angels, for their support. They've raised cancer awareness, saved lives through detection and early prevention. And she wanted to say a special heartfelt love to our angels who are represented with me today, there's a few of them, and each woman who's been our angel among us this year, is they're distinct, and they're invaluable, and they're treasured friends, so countless Southeast Texans can attest to the personal positive impact of their goodwill. So she wants to thank the angels, and as always, send her love and hugs to each of you for allowing us to be part of this initiative and sharing it in the community. If I could also take just a few moments, I introduce my Gift of Life family. With me is our treasurer and long-term board member and Officer Dora Nisby. Many of you know her, she's been serving the community in a myriad of ways, as well as the presiding CDBG Chair. I also have a treasured cherished angel representative with me. Iris Nathan is representing our beloved friend and Allison, well, our tax collector and assessor, Allison Nathan Gads. And she is here, we're sharing the love, and Iris is taking that back, I know you will as well, Mike, because she is in our hearts and prayers. And then our officer in president, interim serving is our President Linda Domito, who's with our faithful and wonderful husband and Joe, I call her our husband, he's with us and helping us in every, he never says no, and he's with us, thank you, Joe. And then Galen Jones, who is with the Baptist Hospitals of Southeast Texas. Galen has been in the community for years and helping our community as well from the Gift of Life and our educational outreach. So thank you, Galen. Baptist Hospitals has been a medical partner for 30 years with the Gift of Life, and now through their Baptist Residency Program, our men that we just screened, 600 men, many of whom are receiving follow-up care thanks to Baptist Hospitals. On my left is Fernice Monroe, who is one of our wonderful angels, many of you know her, she's the President of the Mental Health America of Southeast Texas. And, well, Haley, Officer Morrow, you will see her driving around in the pink ribbon car very soon for the Pink Patrol Car Project. Thank you, Officer Morrow, she gives a lot of her time and effort to help us with that initiative. And Kathy Sumo, who is one of our angels, many of you maybe have worked with Kathy in different community projects, as well as our wonderful staff member Emily Patrizi, who is helping us in building a downtown alliance this year for the 5K Ribbon Run. So I overlooked anyone? No? Okay, so did anyone, do we have, do anyone want to say?
You said it all.
Oh, okay. I think that means, we're talking, okay. Anyway, thank you all so much, for all of us, again, for opening your doors and your hearts and supporting our cause each year. We wouldn't be here without you, so thank you for keeping us sustainable. Could we take a quick picture?
Yes, please come on.
Do you mind?
Yes.
Perfect, perfect, all right, y'all, and one, two, and three. Let's do one more, one, two, and three. Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you very much. Thank you.
Sorry, I got my stuff.
Lastly, we have a proclamation recognizing September 25th through the 29th, 2023, as Clean Energy Week.
Whereas clean energy is part of America's future, across Texas, clean and abundant forms of energy are powering our homes and businesses than ever before. This includes renewable sources such as wind, solar, hydro, and geothermal, as well as nuclear natural gas and carbon capture technologies. And leaders, businesses, and individuals across the city are making choices every day to reduce their carbon footprint by identifying opportunities to make significant changes that will save them money while prioritizing green technology. And whereas Texas is the leading crude oil and natural gas producing state in the nation, and also ranks first in wind-powered electricity generation for the 17th year in a row. In early 2023, Texas has had over 13,500 megawatts of solar capacity, ranking second in the nation for solar power production. In early 2023, Texas had over 13,500 megawatts of solar capacity, ranking second in the nation for solar power production. For 2022, Texas ranked first in the nation for overall electricity generation, accounting for over 12% of the nation's electricity generation, and double the amount of the second-place holder. With over 2,000, I'm sorry, 248,000 clean energy jobs, the clean energy sector is a key driver of economic growth in Texas. With great benefits to Texas, these are jobs that cannot be outsourced due to the onsite nature of construction, installation, and maintenance. Clean energy jobs are inherently local and contribute to the growth of local economies. Therefore, therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 25th through the 29th, 2023, to be Clean Energy Week, and encourage all residents of Beaumont to support our state's clean energy, industries, and resources. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set his hand and caused the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed. Signed, Roy West, on this day, September 19th, 2023.
Thank you. And I don't believe we have anybody here to accept this proclamation?
No, sir.
All right. For those that are here for the proclamation and would like to leave, now's the time to do so. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to recognize Mayor Becky Ames that's here with us today as well. Now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda of the regular Agenda Items 1 through 6. You may also speak on matters of public concern. Please be reminded that on October 1st, you will only be permitted to speak at the beginning of this meeting, and you can only speak once. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city, and state. We would appreciate you keeping it to three minutes, the red light will, the green light will come on when you walk up, the red light will come on when your three minutes is up. And you will have signed in on the kiosk in the entry already, I believe.
Yes, sir. David Kent, public comments?
I'm David Kent. I live at 3400 Veteran Circle, Beaumont, Texas. It's right across from the Veterans Medical Clinic behind Chili's. In 2019, Kittle Property Group came and requested support for their project through the HUD, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. And Beaumont needing housing because of the hurricanes and so forth, readily gave them support, and they took that to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. They made a lot of promises, they got the money, they built the planes. I moved there 2021, August. Some of the problems that I might, I sent an email to Mr. Getz, he may have distributed, I'm not sure, but they, some of these things are, create significant health problems. They didn't mop the floors for seven months. If you can imagine, I looked at the floors in here spotless. If you can imagine our floors not being mopped for seven months. The lobby bathrooms, no toilet paper, no towels. They finally just closed it, and it's built with government money. They restricted our use of the community room to where it's like a mausoleum. They locked it at 5:00, holidays, weekends, locked. They just recently, since I pointed out some of the promises that were made in Austin, they've started opening. The doors are not working, they have automatic doors that open with people that have the little stitched walking devices, and it just quit working. It would unlock, but the person would open it, and there's a lady that was, I don't know, I think she was 85, she weighed about 90 pounds, but she could see her, and the door would be pressing up against her as she was trying to walk, for months, that was, and they just said, oh yeah, we're working on that. It's still not working. But anyway, there are a lot of problems out there. I hope to work with somebody with the City of Beaumont. I've been in touch with Jess Prince, I believe, and she has been... And she has been very helpful. Really appreciate it. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kent.
Martha Chisholm, public comments?
Hello. I'm moving a little slow, but I'm thankful to be moving. My name is Martha Chisholm. I live at 1130 Condon Street here in Beaumont. Mr. Dureo is my councilperson. But I chose to send my comment to Pastor Felschah and A.J. Turner because I know they are councilpersons at large. I'm here about my water bill. I know that the city is about to spend $2 million on our inner-city works. My water bill is $200 a month, and I'm on a fixed income. I feel like I'm being charged to fix the inner-city's water system. I need some help with that. I'm 72 years old. I've worked all my life. I don't ask for anything that I don't need. But I'm sure there are other citizens out there like me who require and need help with this raging water bill. It's affecting our entire city. I call my water white gold, okay? Because it is so expensive. I tell my grandson, don't run that water, that white gold too long, we won't be able to pay for it. He says, okay, Mama, I won't do it. Okay? So, we have to find a resolution for this that will help everybody, not just me. I'm concerned about everybody. And Mayor, when you asked for the city to pray, I was already praying. I was already praying for there to be a solution. I feel like God has sent us a solution. But we also have to work while we're waiting for that solution to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Fears, public comments?
Good afternoon, everyone. Twice in two weeks is kind of unusual for me. I came to address a couple of safety and issues in my neighborhood. I'm John Fears. I live at 458 North 8th Street. The problem that we're having in the neighborhood right now, which is not necessarily any fault of the Park on Calder. They've done a great job over there. Good food, good people, is the parking, the trash, the lewd behavior, people peeing in parking lots. They peed on my building last week. I've caught them trespassing on my property, cutting through to make it shorter instead of using sidewalks. Police have responded several calls. We just had a murder there two weeks ago. It's a safety issue. Parking, they're parking on private property, blocking driveways. I've had my driveway blocked. I couldn't get out. Don't want to tow them off. Park is in their honeymoon period. They're booming. They're doing great. But here, pretty soon, some of these private parking lots are going to start towing their, I guess not constituents, patrons away. Trash is left everywhere. DeAndre's made a good effort to try to get things cleaned up in neighborhoods close by. Still have trash in private parking lot across the street from me, in the street. The people are parking behind law offices, in the pharmacy, Baker's Automotive, Jeannie's Bridal Shop. They're leaving all their trash behind. It's hard to control. It's out of DeAndre's control. So, it's something that has to be done with this, on the city's behalf, to help keep this neighborhood clean. The cleaner the neighborhood, the more successful all the businesses are. People want to come down there. He has great crowds. I give him that. There's nothing better than have people come down to Old Town. But Old Town has a history of transients, trash, drunks. We've tried to get rid of some of that stuff and everything that's been going on. The main thing is lewd behavior, puke on the sidewalks, peeing in the parking lots, defecating where they want to. I had a video of a girl peeing in the parking lot across the other day. But due to her privacy, I can't show that to anybody. And she fought me tooth and nail, but she was going to pee in the parking lot. There was nothing I could do about that. The police checked the call logs. Police have all the records where they're being called out there to answer phone or to respond to calls. I invite the entire city council to come out there Saturday between midnight and 2:00. Come over to my house. Come to the cleaners. Let's listen. Let's see what happens. Be happy to show you.
Thank you, Mr. Fears.
Joshua Moore, public comments?
Hello, everybody's doing. I'm here in representation of the park. My name is Joshua Moore. I'm the owner of Crave Moore Consulting. I am their consultant. I'm just here to paint a picture. Want to start off with intro, the 3165 Family Group. This was a dream of their grandfather. This family came together and created a business that supplements income not only for their workers, but also for their family generational wealth. They have a few key components in the ownership. Some of those being Ms. Coyle, she's HR. She has HR experience. Erin, she's an accountant. She's the accountant for the park. You have Mama. Mama's here today. She came up with the recipe. She's a great cook. And then you have DeAndre, who has a great nonprofit background in community engagement. And then you have myself as the consultant. I have 18 years in this industry. And I create and help the park stay successful. Then there are a few things that are outside of our control that I do want to address some of the verbiage that's been communicated. But I want to start off by saying why I'm here and why I'm working with the park. Been trying to get in contact with DeAndre. My first intention was to consult for a black-owned business when I moved back to Southeast Texas after being in Austin for three years. And I had a phone call with DeAndre, and he told me his dream was to retire his mom and to be able to give his family generational wealth. So, ever since then, I was on board. And I've been working diligently with them since the end of May. We have a zero tolerance for negativity, but also for violence. I do want to express that that murder did not happen at the Park on Calder. It happened there. We do not have, we do not have any control over what happens as people, our patrons, leave the Park on Calder. So, I do want to be clear on that, as well as where they park and things of that nature. So, we do, I'm here to also hear the opinions and feedback of the community so that we can address those issues. We were initially required to have three officers. Now, we're required to have four. The night of the shooting, we had three, and they stopped a suspect within its first 10 minutes. So, that is showing our diligence and our dedication to the community as well. I just wanted to be clear on that. Employees' quality of life. We've been bringing a lot of economic growth to the area and being able to staff a lot of people after COVID. So, I mean, and I've worked with a lot of restaurants, bars, and hotels after post-COVID and helped with that. So, I do have experience in that area as well. And also, it's an amenity to bring people to the area as well. People want.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Antonia Jones, public comments?
Good afternoon, council. I'm Antoinette Hardy. This is my mother, Antonia Jones. I'm speaking on behalf of her today. She resides at Laura Vista that Mr. David Kent just spoke about recently. And I'm sure, I don't want to repeat anything he has stated, but I just want to state some other additional items in the event you are not aware of. There is no backup generator at that facility. So, when the lights go out, they have to take the stairs. A lot of those tenants live on the second and third floor. They have mobility issues. They have a hard time going up and down the stairs. So, when the lights are out, they have to stay in their apartments. The AC unit recently, and the city came out and they informed them everything. So, they removed the flow switch. So, the manager is having to add algae tablets to the AC unit every other week or sometimes she do it weekly. That's what she says. Currently, they don't have a manager because she was fired for not maintaining the building. So, right now, they have no management. There is a unit that leaked into another person's apartment, and now they don't even know who to call because there's no manager on site. The door sweeps on all of the patio doors. If it rains and there's wind, the water will go into the units. So, my mother has to, on a brand-new facility, has to leave a towel at her door when she's not home. So, if she's not home, if it rains, it won't flood into the unit. The elevator has a, still has a pending certification. It still doesn't have an official approval from the state. The front door and the side doors are not working properly. So, anyone can just walk in off the street into the facility. Them being close to I-10, I mean, anybody can just come in and they can hold them all at gunpoint if they wanted to. Also, Mr. Kent stated that the community room stays locked. They, I mean, stays locked the whole time. So, if they want to go and enjoy the open pavilion under, in the rear, they have to go outside. Now, if there's an emergency or anything, it's going to be hard for all of them to get out of that building. For one, the community room is locked where they can have immediate egress out of the building. The other issue is they have not been doing a job. Literally, Mr. Kent stated them floors have not been swept or cleaned, I don't know how long. Every time I go visit my mother, I see the same upset there.
Thank you.
Thank you. But if I could leave this aside, I could finish everything else. Thank you.
Charlie Crabbe, public comments?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Mr. Williams and staff. It's another nice day in Beaumont ahead of fall in the air. Let's see, what else do I have? Oh, yes, the VA Hospital that's coming to town. We ought to get that in downtown Beaumont. We ought to donate Wise Park. And then I think there, it looks like there's a block north of the park that's, it looks like it could be available. It looks vacant. I see the resurfacing project on 4th Street progressing with a lot of concrete repairs. Bart, could we maybe fill each hole in the future with limestone base, pack it well, and place a three-inch layer of hot-mix asphalt on top to level out the surface before the permanent asphalt surfacing is done, redone, rather than all the concrete work? I have not done any engineering on that method, just a thought. Pennsylvania and Sabine Pass in the South End are progressing on their street repair also. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for being favorable to asphalt resurfacing. A big event occurring this past week and this week is the fall migration of hummingbirds through the area. The hummingbirds stop off at backyard feeders before flying on to Central America for the winter. The birds will return the latter part of April next year. Backyards on the edge of town will experience as many as 10, six to 10 birds trying to eat at each feeder. Feeders in town will experience less birds at the backyard feeders. The birds are consistent all day, quite a sight. A simple mixture of four cups of water to one cup of sugar is the recipe to be placed in a hummingbird feeder. I have mentioned Burbank Street out west off Washington before as being an illegal trash dumping site. There was a lot of recyclables being discarded. I would like to recommend that the city only pick up on that street every two, two weeks rather than weekly due to the fact there is no residents on the street. It would give individuals time to go through and select reusable items. It will eliminate a small amount going to the landfill. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe.
Hope to be back next week, and my time's up.
David P., public comments?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. It's been a while since I've been here, but of course, I've been watching. And one of the things that I've noticed is that the council addressing issues concerning the sewers and the water, things of that nature. If you go back two mayors ago, this same issue came up about the city streets and city. And we constantly on the same thing over and over again about these sewers. The problem I think it is is that it's a failure of maintenance, a failure of making sure that their proper maintenance on these sewer lines and things of that nature are being properly assessed. Because obviously, when you got pipes bursting all over the city, water lines busting all over the city, it's going to raise the rate of people's water. And as the lady just spoke about, her water bill being $200. Come on now. You know what I'm saying? That's poor maintenance. And that also goes towards those who are overseeing these sewers and are overseeing, you know, the projects. They need to be more conscious of that. Because if not, then you're going to have this problem all over again. And again, also too, we haven't heard anything more about what's being done about the AT&amp;T Building. It's been purchased. No one has spoken about it, the projects downtown. No one has mentioned any updates on that. But we spent a lot of money on research. The last thing I recall is that we spent $92,000 or maybe $100,000 on research, just determining whether or not this city, this area is viable for restaurants and hotels. That's a waste of money. You know what I'm saying? We need to make sure that we are, we're taking care of the process of how we use the money and how it's been appropriated. Because obviously, this money is just going through the wind, and these folks are just milking you guys. So, we need to make sure that the people overseeing this are being assessed, being watched, and what they're doing concerning how this money is being used, what has been properly done, and how it's been recorded back to the city and to the citizens of Beaumont. Because we need to know what's going on. If not, we're going to be with the same issue. And on a lighter note, I want to compliment the city attorney. I spoke with her many times. I enjoy speaking with her. I think she is an asset to this city because she's keeping you guys out of legalities. And you need to thank her and give her a raise for what she's doing. Because I'm telling you, a lot of you guys be sitting in front of these judges, you know, with these big old settlements and everything. But she's doing an awesome job. And I'm not just blowing up her head, but she's doing an awesome job because she cares about the people, and she cares about this community, and she cares about this council. And to you, Mayor West, I compliment you as well.
Thank you, Mr. P.
Thank you very much.
Alfred Dean, public comments?
How you doing, Council? Alfred Dean, 9290 Meadow Road. Just a couple of comments. Pretty much everybody knows me. I work behind the scenes with the youth. And I've spoke with multiple councilmembers. I want to give a big shout out, Mr. Neal. He helps me a lot. The mayor, you know, me and A.J. go back. My comment is on, we talk about our youth in this city. I've created three organizations- I've created three organizations that populate maybe 300 plus kids. We're not even touching the surface. I just left from a meeting at the school and seen seven fourth graders getting suspended. Where are we at as a city, which I've talked to the mayor last night about partnering up with B I S D? We got to do more. Because I'm gonna tell you, I work out of town. And if I was, I considered moving my family out of town because how bad Beaumont is getting. I'm raw in the race in Beaumont. I'm gonna leave it right there. Yesterday, had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Getz. I'm in this war. I ran against him two years ago, but I'm gonna tell you, when you get to know somebody and you talk to them, then you understand why decisions are made. My only, my only personal reason I have to be up here is we have one rec center in the city of Beaumont, and we have 100 and some thousand people here. When I put out flyers for my youth, I have 20,000 plus from fifth grade down with one rec center. How is that possible? I don't understand that. Now, I want to speak on the part. That murder has nothing to do with that business. I'm just gonna say that. That was a young man that came out of Houston, Texas, that committed a crime in our city. He wasn't from here. That's what we got to stop. We can't have people coming into Beaumont committing crimes and they're trying to get on. Them officers did an outstanding job of getting them. As for the water, I sat there and I listened last night about the raise and I understand it, yes. I'm a working man, so yeah. But I got a house full of five, I have five kids at home. So y'all can expect what my water bill looks like. A 4% raise like that, I probably can handle it. My grandmother worked just like this lady, her whole life. So that mean now I got to pick up the slack because once that bill come out and it's $100, $200, not only do I pay my bill, I got to go pay my grandmother bill because I'm not going to let her go without. So we just, next time, we have to consider everyone before we make decisions. I want to commend you because I know on Facebook they put out, I heard you was the only, Mr. Neal, the only one that voted against that. Thank you. I understand why we did it, but like I said, I make good money. We got a lot of our elderly folks that can't do that. Thank y'all.
So I love a full council and I love the enthusiasm of our visitors today. But we're going to ask that you refrain from clapping during the three minutes so that they can get their full three minutes before council. Thank you.
Mary Williams, item number six on the agenda.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm not going to get excited, so. I would like to comment about the item number six on the regular agenda. First of all, I would like to thank you so much for letting our U.S. veterans ride for free on Friday for our stand down event that's going to be taking place right here at our Civic Center. Thank you so much. We're expecting between 75 vendors to be there. I would also like City Council possibly to look into our U.S. veterans traveling for free year round on the zip buses, providing proof of service. Houston has hundreds of thousands of veterans. In fact, it's the number one city that veterans are going to right now to find employment. And they get to ride their buses for free. I would like for us to maybe look into, possibly, do some research, not funded, but just to do some research and see if our veterans providing proof of service, that they could start riding for free. I think they deserve that, they've earned it. And I would like to see that possibly happen in the city of Beaumont. Thank you.
Thank you.
Juanita Lewis, public comments?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mr. Kent was here, I'm a resident of 3400 Veteran Circle also. And over half the residents, what they didn't say, we are on nebulizers oxygen, where Mr. Kent brought his oxygen. And when our air goes out in our apartments. I called the weekend of Labor Day. I didn't get a response until Tuesday. And she said the manager was fired. But she said we didn't have a maintenance person. He was on vacation and she couldn't answer my call. So we were in our apartments with 83 degrees. So we, of course, we had to leave because we're on nebulizers and we're on oxygen. So I was just commenting on what Mr. Kent had to say about the 3400 Veteran Circle.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Is there a motion and a second for approval?
Mayor, just a moment. Did you sign up on the kiosk, sir? Okay, can you go sign up real quick? Thank you. What's your name? Give me one second. Roy Malvoe? I apologize, I thought I called your name. I'm sorry. Roy Malvoe, public comments? Thank you.
To the Honorable Mayor Roy West, council members and staff. My name is Roy Malvoe. I reside at 2346 Broadway in the Old Town District. And I stand to address extreme noise. And I want to make sure you understand extreme noise. The noise is coming from a property facility located at 2325 Calver, known as the Park Center. Now, this might be a good business venture. It might be a good economic venture. But it's hell and terror to the people that live in close proximity. It's been such from day one, and it hadn't got any better. Okay? And when we make a complaint, the noise seems to elevate and go on longer and longer. Talked to the Chief of Police and I, I gave him my concern. I was made aware that there are some negative impact even to other small businesses concerning this establishment. This tells me that the noise level is under the control of the property owner or the operator. Because when you complain, it doesn't go down. It only goes up along the periods of time. Now, whether the murder that took place at the establishment was under his control is not my concern. My concern here is today that my due process has been ignored. Before this establishment was ever given a permit, as private citizen Roy Malvoe, I called, asked to have a meeting so that we could have an input as to what kind of establishment that would relocate there. I was ignored then, I'm being ignored now. And to me, this is not a small business neighborhood dispute. Make no mistake about it. This is a liberty, a right, a liberty pursuit of happiness dispute. And I see it as such. And I take it as such because my due process is continuing to be ignored.
Thank you, Mr. Malvoe.
I have a copy of my statement, I'm going to leave it.
Thank you.
With the Secretary.
Thank you, better take this shit.
Thank you so much. Jason Capps, public comments? Thank you.
What I'd like to speak to you about is some of the things that's happened here in my life. I've grown up here and was born and raised in Beaumont, Texas. And just really what I want to get you straight to, I want us to know that the Holy Bible is coming fulfilled right now. And a lot of us have been put in positions here to speak about it. Me and my Aunt Patricia Capps was born and raised here in Beaumont, Texas. We go to M H M R. And we stick to things about the new world order and about the way things, that some of the things that's happened here in the United States. Dealing with L S D, ecstasy, being, dealing with things like that that I have, that, that, there's proof that actually that our government has, has been producing it. And when you have a lot of things going on with people's lives, I've turned 52 this year. I've been in and out of the system here. I just want y'all to realize that the Bible prophecy is coming down here. I have friends that God has put in my life. I've tried to root here and do work like that through, through our system, Michael, Philip and John. I know it just, it's coincidence like that. And anybody could come up with something like that and make it, but it really has happened like that. I want y'all to know that the beaches have came up so much since I've done here, at least a third of our beach is gone. You know, there's just so many things I wanted to speak to you about, but my, my, my family's, I have seizures now a lot and I end up going to the hospital. And my Aunt Patricia, when Harvey hit, she went to the hospital and she's never, she had put her in a home and she's never came home from there. And I'm speaking for that. I'm speaking on some of the technologies that we have out there that are from the aliens. And I know people don't believe in that, but I believe that a lot of us here that are A B positive, O and negative come from bloodlines like that. Really, the whole system is on that. There's a lot of money that's spent here in the United States for this and actually we're, we're the aliens. I know that sounds crazy and I know that, and I am a diagnosed schizophrenic, but I just want you to know that I'm not trying to cause any problems here. I've had problems with our lawyers. I've had problems with a lot of our system here. And I'm not trying to cause that problem with anything. I'm just asking for forgiveness and thank you for letting me speak. There's a lot more I'd like to speak about. I'm so nervous, it's hard for me to communicate with y'all. I just want y'all to know that. But my father was a convicted methamphetamine cook here in Beaumont. And when I started learning about some of the dealings that the Germans had during World War II and methamphetamine and different drugs, it, it just, it astonished me. I just want to ask you for, thank you for letting me speak and forgiveness for the things that I've done here in this, in Jefferson County. I'm not trying to cause problems and I just want you to know, thank you and amen.
Thank you.
I think that's all, Mayor.
Is there a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. City Manager, we have the reading of item number one.
Yes, Mayor. Council consider an ordinance authorizing the city manager to approve the last stage in the film friendly designation process. And we're recommending approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for approval of item number one?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval for item number one. Any discussion?
Just if Kenny Williams can expand upon the reasoning, the benefit of a film friendly city for people who maybe that don't understand or haven't been keeping up with what you've actually been working on with staff.
Okay. And I'm going to ask Miles Haines to come up too. Thank you, council member. This is something we started working on some months ago. We were doing things to bring, to, to bring more attention, positive attention to Beaumont. And this has always been one to do that because it produces exponentially. If, if, if a company comes to town and does a film, that film goes across the world, across the internet, et cetera. So it gives the opportunity for more discovery of what we have here, the positive aspects of Beaumont. And, and so I'm going to, Miles, if you want to add to that.
Yeah, I'll just add, filming has changed over the years. It's not just done in one location. You'll see many Netflix series or seasons are done different places. And so the governor's office has a pot of money that incentivizes for certain communities to fit into. And so that's what this program is. It allows us to be designated as a film friendly city. And so when filmmakers come and they have a certain budget, they have a process in which they can turn that receipt into the governor's office and they can be reimbursed. And so that all the money and the incentive is from the governor's office from a budgetary standpoint. And what we do as a city is we try to lower the cost of a permit or the usage of a street. And we try to encourage facilities to open up their doors for this type of project or filming. And it's totally up to them. And so there's a twofold. We lower our costs a little bit to incentivize filming and it markets the city of Beaumont. And then the governor's office has a pot of money that it reimburses for bigger films that are done in the city of Beaumont with the hopes of, one, hiring local, you stay local and you eat local. So I think that's it on my end.
Thank you, Miles. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to thank Miles for his work on that film friendly project. Item two, council consider resolution authorizing the purchase of a standby diesel generator from Mustang Cat of Houston for the Pine Street Water Treatment Plant with funding from the Water Utilities Fund and approval of the resolution recommended.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for approval? There's a motion and a second for approval of item number two. Any discussion?
Question, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Neil.
I'm assuming we don't need this generator right away because this thing is 100 weeks out. Is that?
Yes, sir. This is a planned upgrade. We operate the plant on three generators that run together. And currently, we can operate the plant on those generators. Obviously, we have during emergencies. However, some of our equipment has a really big power draw when you start it up. The term is you start it across the line. So the high service pumps that pump water to the city are started across the line and the backwash pumps are started across the line. So currently, if we're pumping water out to the city and we're on generator, we can't activate and use the backwash pumps at the same time. So we have to stop pumping to the city, backwash the filters and then resume pumping to the city. So this is a plan to upgrade that will replace the oldest generator and upsize it so that we can operate the backwash pumps and the high service pumps at the same time. And unfortunately, there's a huge, you know, length of time to get it delivered. So we are asking for that purchase to be initiated now so that we can get it in in a future fiscal year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three, please?
Council consider an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 budget with the recommendation of approval by staff.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number three. Any discussion? Yes, Councilman.
Just for clarification for some citizens that may be questioning this. Todd, these, these adjustments in our budget do not add to the bottom line, correct?
No, sir. These are adjustments that are made to the appropriated budget only. They don't add to the bottom line.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four, please?
Yes, Mayor. Council consider a resolution providing for the reimbursement of a capital expenditure incurred prior to the closing of financing with the recommendation of approval, approval of the resolution by staff. resolution by staff.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item number four. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please?
Council consider a resolution approving the write-off of uncollectible delinquent accounts with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a second. There's a motion and a second for approval of item number five. Any discussion? Councilman Turner, then Councilman Durio.
Mr. Manager, when we say uncollectible, can you kind of go into detail what can be some of the reasons of what that can confine?
Okay, I'm gonna yield to Chief Financial Officer Semino on that.
So for all these categories of receivables, you know, we do our due diligence on collection efforts, which is sending out, you know, monthly invoices. If that doesn't work, we send them to the collection agencies, and the collection agencies work them for at least a year. So this is something we do at the end of every fiscal year, is to clean up the books for our audit. When we say we're gonna write these off, we're writing them off for the audit. But if at any time one of these accounts become collectible, obviously, we collect that money. So it's basically just a bookkeeping cleanup practice that's required for the annual audit.
Thank you.
Question been answered.
All right. All in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City manager, will you please take us into the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. Council to conduct a public hearing authorizing zip to temporarily waive transit fares for veterans on September 22, 2023. Open the hearing, and then we'll close it.
We'll open the public hearing at this time. Okay, the public hearing discussions are closed. Can we have a motion for any discussion on council? Or we need to do a motion first?
We're gonna read the item number six first.
Okay, now we're gonna read item number six.
Yes. Now, council consider a resolution authorizing zip to temporarily waive transit fares for veterans on September 22, 2023, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for approval of item number six. Any discussion? Councilman Durio, Councilman Neal, Councilman.
Yes, Mr. Manager, I think Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams had a great idea, and it's something that we seriously need to look into as far as letting our veterans ride our public transportation for free. We just need a way to get to, if nothing else, to get to and from VA hospital or the VA clinic. And it's easy to get, you can get a VA ID, or also myself, on my driver's license, it says I'm a veteran. You can get it like that, you can get it on your gun license. So it's a lot of ways that they can identify themselves as a veteran. Or we might be able to work out something where they could come up here and get some type of a veteran transportation card for our public transportation. But something I would love for staff to look into and see if we can get that done.
Yeah, we'd be glad to look into it.
Then Councilman Neal, Councilman Samuel, and Councilman Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to echo what Councilman Durio said, I would also support looking into that idea. I guess my question for the one that's in front of us today, though, what's the procedure for a veteran to be able to use it for free on the 22nd?
They would just need to show their valid veteran's ID or military ID of some sorts.
Okay. Is there a way we could properly advertise this before then?
Well, I know that the Stand Down event, which is this Friday, has been pretty widely advertised, but we do have our communications department, and we can ask them to see if there's some way to kind of echo that announcement.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say I support that also.
With Councilman Turner, then Councilman Felschaw.
Yeah, I think it's important you kind of always ask for guidance from the council, and if it's a workshop or whatever we need to do, I support that as well.
Councilman Felschaw?
I'm not sure that this is even possible, but I noticed the director of Zip is here, the transit. Advertising this for the 23rd is tough. And again, I don't know that's possible for the bus driver to even ask the question to, are you a veteran? I wonder if there's any way that, I mean, it's hard, I know you can't identify somebody as a veteran, but maybe the question could be asked.
Good afternoon. So the plan is, we have right now, we're gonna be honoring any type of ID that they will present to us for this Friday event. Any valid veteran ID, I understand you mentioned a driver's license and the likes. Obviously, we're not planning on questioning. Somebody is coming in, this is my veteran ID, we're gonna honor that for this specific Friday event. And if you want me to can proceed and share a little bit of what we have in discussion? For a bus pass? Or wait for...
Yeah, just real quickly, we are looking at some additional policies and waivers in the very future, which we hope to do in conjunction with Veterans Day. I will just comment that this being a one-day event, like Ms. Sam Miguel mentioned, we're just checking a military ID, whereas we feel like the idea we're gonna present to y'all in the coming months, it would be a more vetted process where we have to confirm, working with the VA, as to confirming that ID.
Thank you.
And Mayor, just for clarification, there's two different dates in the agenda memo, but it should be September 22, just so that everyone's clear on the date.
Friday is the 22nd.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Now, now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak, to make public comments.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we do have a work session.
Oh, yes, I'm skipping things.
Okay. It's quite all right.
Yes. Sorry about that.
Mayor, we have a work session. Council to conduct a work session to review the proposed adoption of a naming ordinance. Now, yield to the city attorney.
So at the request of council, we put together a proposed naming ordinance, and I will circulate that now and then go over some of the highlights for that. So the purpose of the ordinance is to establish standards and procedures for naming and renaming city streets, parks, facilities, and structures, and other features. The overall purpose, or the overall decision-making would still rest with council, but we would essentially just have more guidelines for the community and ways of recognizing and honoring those people, events, places, and organizations that continue to have a positive impact on our community. So the naming and enforcement responsibilities would essentially rest in two areas, either with, if there was a board in place, for example, Planning Commission for Naming Streets, they would obviously make an application to that board. That board would then make a recommendation to council, and then council would have the final say-so in that regard. If there was no board in place to receive that recommendation, then the recommendation would go through the city clerk's office, who would then transfer it to the appropriate staff member. And then there are several, in our proposed ordinance, we recommended that an ad hoc committee be created that composed of at least one member of council, potentially the mayor, one member of staff, the city manager, or they are appointed designees, and then three citizens at large just to have buy-in from the community. One of the things that we do outline in the ordinance are some guiding principles, if you will, so that the citizens or individuals who are seeking to have a property named or renamed would understand what would satisfy those conditions from the city. It's not intended to be a checklist, but just kind of what the city would look at. And some of those guiding principles would be, does the proposed name have historical or cultural or social significance for current and future generations? Does the name promote a positive image in the members of the community? Will the name symbolize a major achievement or advancement for the community at large? Will the name be suitable based on the location of the property being named? And does the proposed name have an unintentional or inappropriate meaning, connotation, or association? And we pull these suggestions from other ordinances and from other cities that have similar naming ordinances, and we feel like those are some good guidelines to just kind of go from. But obviously, council would have the ability to override or decide how those fit in, because those are some subjective things. So we have some special rules for naming categories. We broke those three downs. So exceptional individuals was one, and we have some principles or some things that kind of resonate. Did the person make a lasting or significant contribution to the city of Beaumont? Did the person make a substantial contribution to the betterment of a specific city of Beaumont property? Did the person have a positive impact on the lives of Beaumont residents? Did the person demonstrate a service or a kind of volunteerism for many years of service to the community? Another category would be for historical events and places. And basically, that one would just kind of be whether or not there was a preference to just names to honor a local person or events of some sort. We would obviously give a preference to individuals who were local versus someone who was not local, regardless of their impact on the community, the focus being on the pride in the community and so forth. The other category would be major gifts. And so for this one, this would be an individual who wanted to contribute a large amount of money in order to have some naming rights. And so for this one, we'd have some thresholds that would be put into place. Those would include deeding land to the city upon which the property will be located, payment of one-half or more of the capital cost of constructing the property, and the creation of a long-term endowment for the maintenance and repair of the property. Again, if the name that was proposed by the major donor was rejected by council, then that donor would be able to suggest a new name, and there would obviously be a compromise between them two. The other category, and the last category, would be if an individual wanted to purchase naming rights. So in this particular situation, what we would do, if the city would be interested in selling naming rights to a property, we would go out for a request for proposal, an RFP. In that request for proposal, we would create guidelines for the amount of the purchase, the terms, sorry, the amount of the contribution, the terms for which the city would be willing to sell those rights for. Those other things that would be included would be the reputation of the purchaser. If a commercial company or corporation, the alignment of the purchases, products or services with the property being named, and obviously, the duration, the revenue specific to that purpose. If the name that was proposed in the RFP was not one that was acceptable to council, then we would go back out for RSP, the same process that we do for other things. There would be obviously different categories for if it was a new property or an existing property in order to create those fair and equitable thresholds. There are also some things that our office recommended, again, based on what was successful in other cities, that there are some names that should be rejected, things that are associated, cumbersome or corrupted or modified names, profanity, discriminatory, names relating to age, religion, creed, just basically anything that would be overall offensive to an individual. Duplicate names or names that are similar to other names in other jurisdictions, just in order to have our copyright issues or jurisdictional issues. Street names that contain more than 20 characters, including spaces, just for printing reasons. And then names appointed or elected officials currently in office at the time. There are some, just, again, generic procedures that we've already mentioned. If there was an existing board, then we would take that route. If there was no existing board, then we would go through the city's clerk's office, and they would just kind of cycle through. The ordinance outlines at least 30 days for either the staff or the board to make a recommendation back to council. And then once that recommendation is made, it's meant to be put on the next available I guess if there's no other, I guess, questions on the procedure, again, the overall idea and concept is that the city didn't have a process for naming facilities in the past. It was just kind of arbitrary, for lack of a better term. So this would allow for us to have a formal process in place moving forward. You do have the ordinance. This one has not been, I guess, workedshopped amongst our department heads, so you guys are seeing it firsthand. So we'll be just kind of discussing it with some other department head directors to get some feedback. But if you guys have feedback as well, happy to have that, and we can move forward next step, if that's the bill of the council.
Now would be the time for discussion. Councilman Gess, and then Councilman Felschaw.
So, Ms. Attorney, would the next step be for this to be brought back to council for consideration of adoption?
Yes, sir. Again, like, we typically like to workshop the ordinances with those potential departments that could be affected, namely, here would be community development, but it could also be streets, because we are talking about the possibility of renaming streets. So we would like to work with those individuals and possibly see getting their feedback first. But then the next step would be to, if there are no, and that's just a matter of emailing it out and having them provide feedback or having a staff meeting. But if there's no overwhelming changes from either staff or from council, then we can put it on for council consideration.
Councilman Felschaw, then Councilman Turner.
City attorney, I apologize if I missed it, but there's a lot of information here to assimilate in such a short time. But let's say someone, it talks about major gifts, individual being named, is there any type of a contractual agreement with this? And let's say a name is put on a building, five years later, they engage in activity that's unbecoming. Can we take that name down? Or is there some type of a contractual agreement because of the finances that were given?
So for a situation where there's a major gift and it's a continuing, ongoing gift, there may be, but there would always be a contractual relationship between the city and an individual who's giving the city money. So we can also outline those terms. What this particular ordinance does is align ways in which the council can accept those gifts and can accept those gifts in exchange for either naming rights or proposed name change. Not all of the situations involve money. So there's two, the major gifts and then the purchasing of naming rights. So if you purchase naming rights, and I purchased them for an extent amount of time, let's just say that we sold the naming rights to the Civic Center for 10 years, and the person we named the building after commits, turns out to be a mass murderer, right? Obviously, I wouldn't be a good attorney if I didn't put a caveat in there that allowed the city to rescind those naming rights, for, you know, for lack of moral character. There would also be a situation if we wanted to, again, rename a street after someone, let's just, again, pick a prominent athlete from the city of Beaumont, we wanted to name that street after them, and then later, that person is indicted for criminal charges. Again, there was no money exchanged, but we can change the name of the street without a problem. The sole purpose of the ordinance is not to limit the ability of council to name facilities or name streets. It's just to give us, like, put the community on notice if they wanted to propose those things. What are some things that the city would look at? I know we've been inundated several times with requests to change names of buildings or even streets, and there was really not a guideline in place for that. It's just, you know, this was a good person, he did good things in the community, and I want a street named after him. There are several people in our community who are amazing, who've done great things, and who've even left our community. And so this would just kind of allow council to have a guiding principle, but also for the community to understand these are the things that council would accept as proposals for that.
Okay, want to follow up, Mayor? Under guiding principles, just, and I'm not saying I agree or disagree with this, but I just know that it seems to have been the practice that you not name a building after someone until after they've deceased, so that you can vet them out, and that it's no possibility of them, after the naming is put up, to then do something that's undesirable. Would that be a part of this, or is that a decision the council has to make, that we don't name buildings after someone until after they're deceased?
So that was not an item that was included in the ordinance. However, that could be a... could be a, a requirement of council to, to only name buildings post-mortem. There were, that was not something that was like really consistent throughout other city ordinances. There was not, not a big concern, again, for that, because I guess they could, you know, always change the name if they wanted to, and for naming rights purposes, could kind of separate themselves from that if they wanted to. But the overall consensus was that council still had the authority to kind of do that. So I think the idea of naming someone post-mortem is that, you know, they kind of lived, lived their life, and there's no threat of anything coming up, but, you know, things come out all the time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Turner.
Is it the same process? Let's just say if someone wants to name a street after somebody they feel doing well, do they still have to do the petition process, or would this change things, or would everything still be similar?
So it would be different in the sense that we would no longer need the petition process unless that's something that council still wanted to connect to the process. I think that during the petition process and supplementing it through would just add value to the process to make it more transparent and more equal. But at this point, if someone wanted to do that, they would still have to meet the requirement. So this isn't like taking away from existing procedures, it's just adding to, and again, like I said, making the, the principles consistent, so that it's not one person that did this and got their name, and then another person, you know, did this. It's just, these are the things that council will consider for proposals for name changes or potential name changes, or, or new names to, to facilities in the future.
And to make sure it didn't go over my head, it's not a fee associated to like street names or street signs, it was just the major buildings and things to that magnitude, or was it everything?
So there was no fee associated with any, any of those things. Remember, the major gifts was if someone wanted to say, I'm going to donate this, my family owns this large lot of land, and I want to donate it to the city in order for them to build a recreational center, right? And I'm going to donate that to the city. They didn't give any money, but they gave land that has a land value associated with it, and that's something that you can consider for that. The other thing is that they could give part of the construction cost or a threshold of the construction cost to be considered for that, and then council could, you know, consider that in terms of whether or not they received a naming rights or, or part thereof. The other one was if someone wanted to, again, purchase naming rights, the council says, we're building a new facility, and we want to know if anyone wants to put their name on it. If the, if the city wanted to build an anatorium or, or some other, you know, public facility, and we wanted to, you know, have sponsorships for it, we could sell the name of the building to someone, and we'd have to go out for RFP for that, which is different from if someone said, hey, I have land and I want to give it to the city for this specific purpose.
Understood.
Councilman Samuel.
That's okay. Well, over the years, we've had folks come to the city about naming streets and naming buildings, and we've never had an objective means of doing that. It was really subjective, and it's always difficult in having something that's subjective, and it's an opinion. But we always have the right to remove names, just like the Confederate statues or things like that. If there's something, we've always been able to do that, we hadn't had any problems. But I don't think we've ever had an issue about someone wanting to purchase, for example, Ford Park or something like that, or purchasing the naming rights to the Civic Center. We had no objective criteria in place to say, well, they meet the criteria, so that should not be a problem. It's always been, you know, well, a consensus of council that would go along with it. So this just makes it, gives us an objective way of determining whether, what we're going to do in the future. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And so y'all still have, like I said, that the ordinance doesn't take away any of the council's ability to reject or to make compromises in that sense, but this would be your, your kind of guiding.
Guiding light.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, at this point, I will just close the work session. All right, now, at this point, we're going to have, allow for more public comments. If you have not, if you've not already spoken, and you'd like to make public comments, please sign up at the kiosk at the back of the room, and the city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak, and you will approach the mic and please state your city and state, and keep it to, your comments to three minutes, and the green light will come on, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
I have no one, Mayor.
Okay. We're going to begin with Councilman Nield.
No comment, Mayor.
I'm going to keep the, keep the flow going and say no comment.
There's something wrong here if we get out at 3:08, so.
I definitely, I definitely don't care about the flow. So I do want to discuss some things that was brought up earlier. I want the community to know, and it be clear and transparent, when citizens come to the mic, we can't respond. We have to wait to the end of the meeting to respond to some of the citizens' concerns. One thing that was brought up was a rec center. Mr. Williams, I know we just finished our CIP plan, and I know that's something, the whole council did support multiple rec centers in the community. I know we did have something budgeted, if I'm not mistaken, is it 2027?
I don't know the exact year of it and staff, ACM, if y'all know, but we did include, city council included a sports complex, too, that's more than just a rec center, it's all encompassing of sports facilities, but also a building for things.
Yeah, I think that's important to speak to some of these things the citizens talk about, so we know that this council is working in that direction. The second thing is with nightclubs, bars, we do have a noise ordinance that officers can go out and utilize to dictate if the noise level is too high or not. So I, I want that to be clear and transparent, that we do have that in place. We dealt with that incident with multiple bars and nightclubs, but I don't want anyone to think that we don't have those criterias in place from the city's perspective, correct?
Correct. And if there's a citizen feels like that it's in violation, we'll send somebody out to examine and even take readings, I understand, at property lines and determine if they're violating the noise ordinance.
And my third point was, we did have, I understand a lot of people concerned with the water bill, as I was, but I do understand that if we don't spend money to correct our infrastructure issues, it kind of would remain the same, if not worsen. And we do have a senior citizen water discount for all our seniors. That's something I do want to make sure, if you are a senior citizen, you're not where it is, that raise that we did do, it would offset the amount of money with the senior citizen discount. So if you don't know, you can go to our Water Customer Service Department, correct, and apply for the senior citizen discount.
Yes, and we encourage all senior citizens to do that. And also, like that, Councilmember Turner, that, that wasn't just a subjective decision by council to raise rates, this was done after an objective study that came up with data, solid data that studied our existing rates, studied our infrastructure projects, our future infrastructure projects, and looked at the entire operations, daily operations of, of water facilities, and then to determine what we needed to charge as a rate for the next five years, going into the future to be able to sustain that operation. So it's not just something that we sit here and decide, say, oh, we need a rate. There was a scientific study done to determine that rate.
And I think that's important, we want to build the trust with our community, we want citizens to understand why the decisions are made, but we also want citizens to feel comfortable with the return on the investment that we're actually investing in with raising things. So I understand both sides, just want to let you know that, Mr. Pete. The next thing is, lastly, our Parks and Recs Committee. We made a, a change in the status of how our city is functioning, the flow, and Parks and Recs are not two separate departments. I would highly recommend that this council is consider, since they are separate departments, we separate the Parks and Recs Committee, because it's kind of hard to get those guys to merge when they do two different things now, since it's no more a Parks and Recs Committee. So I would just ask if I can get some support from the council to separate that, since they're now separate working arms, and they're not the same department no more. And to the park, thank y'all for coming, I appreciate you guys coming. It means a lot that you guys are investing, doing innovative things in our community. I support it. I support it 100%. I think a good idea would be that maybe we can do a town hall, possibly at the park, and I don't mind coming and supporting that, and allow the neighbors of the whole town neighborhood to come to the town hall, and we can see what we can do to work together to solve this problem, because I want y'all here, I'm pretty sure the whole community wants y'all here, and I want y'all to feel welcome. And I know y'all are more than willing to work with the community to make things better, so I know y'all will, and I know Deandre will do a good job, and I just want to let y'all know that. Thank y'all for sitting through this meeting, it meant a lot that y'all came, and we also appreciate the citizens who came and spoke with their concerns. If we're not willing to talk to each other, we could never solve the problems if we don't simply talk, not attack, but talk.
Thank you. Councilman Gatz.
I want to thank the city administration for conducting not one, but two press conferences concerning our water situation and our attempts at notifying the community of where we are. And one of the things I'm also curious about is, in terms of restrictions, I know that we've been at level three for some time now, part of the reason is lack of rain, and part of the reason is because of the number of leaks, which taxes our pumping capacity. Since we've had some rain, not enough, but some, and we're getting a hold of our leaks, when do we think we might be able to move into, from level three to level two?
Well, we had that discussion this morning, Councilmember Gatz, and we're anticipating this week, being able to do that, you know, we don't want to move too quickly as to go back and forth, and it just seemed like, you know, there's some indecision in what's happening. We're getting the leaks down, the numbers is lower than it's been since we started this. So we're anticipating, we're to make a decision on Thursday on whether it's going back to stage two.
Thank you. With regard to the comments that were made about the park today, I think Mr. Moore and his investors have done a tremendous job of converting that property into something that was sitting out on vacant, into something that the community can be proud of. But I also know that Mr. Moore shares the concerns of his neighbors and fellow citizens about some of the, some of the things that are happening in the blocks and parking lots surrounding the park. This is a problem, because while they may not be occurring directly on the park's property, they are occurring. And so we're going to have to figure out a way to end the lawlessness that occurs outside of the park's property, because it does have a negative impact on our community. And I appreciate Councilmember Turner's suggestion for the community and the park management and ownership to come together to collaborate on something like that and try to find some solutions. So we hope that we can do that, and I'm confident that we can do that. We want the business to be successful and thrive, and I'm sure that there are ways that we can reach that consensus. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Durio.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. I think his last meeting or the meeting before that, Pastor Sharp asked about maybe getting Crime Stopper signs on the city vehicles. Have we looked into that yet?
We've had some preliminary discussions on that. We'll be discussing it more and, and having it with council. There are some challenges we've identified, and I can't share them unfortunately right now, but there are some challenges in doing that, but we will continue to research it.
Okay. Also, I attended Operation One Vote luncheon today, given by Bobby Patterson. Today is National Voter Registration Day, so, and they're signing folks up to actually go out illegally, registers people to vote, to do that, and make sure you get registered to vote, because Councilman, Councilwoman Bobby Patterson, who held Ward Four seat, was actually elected by one vote. So every vote matters, and that's something that we need to remember. Also, remind people about the veteran stand down Friday, I think it starts at nine o'clock Friday morning, it's going to be right here in the Civic Center, it's a, it's a lot of good resources over there for the veterans, signing them up for different things, like an ID card and, and stuff like that. And so if you know a veteran, it's not just, it's for disabled veterans, but all veterans are welcome. So if you know one, tell them to come on out. And thank you, Ms. Williams, for the information on the zip. Ms. Williams, who's also an Army veteran, you're appreciated, that's a great idea, and we'll see what we can do with that. And also, on the veterans of, at 3,400 Veterans Circle, that said, someone that spoke to Ms. Prince, and we can look into that and, and see what we could do to help with that situation over there, find out who owns that and, and who's supposed to be managing that, and see what, what we can do to assist in that. And also, on the park on Calder, which that is, that's in my ward, and that's a great idea, Councilmember Turner, maybe we can meet with the, the Oaks Historic District, that's the neighborhood association over there. But I feel the owners of the park on Calder are doing everything they can, and you can't really hold them responsible for everything that goes around on, in the property around them, but the folks that go there, that frequent that place, they have to be responsible. They, they have to be responsible. And just remember, the folks that own property around there, because I saw one comment on social media, say, my property is protected by Smith &amp; Wesson. It's not worth killing somebody because they threw a can on the street. That, that shouldn't even been said, because it's, this is a legitimate business, and they're doing a good job, and it's just something that we will be able, council is part of our job to help come up with solutions. And we can sit down, and we can discuss this, and we can get this taken care of, and, and continue to, the park on Calder can continue to thrive, and the neighbors around there can continue to thrive and enjoy their neighborhood, and we can work it out, because we all grown ups here. Also, I'm going to make sure that someone speaks to Ms. Chisholm, 1100 Condon, $200 water bill is simply unacceptable. It must be something going on there, so if someone, if staff, from staff can get with her, that would, that would be great. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mayor, real quickly, just want to echo what the manager said regarding the rec center, it is in the CIP FY '27 and '28, so it is included as proposed in the CIP. And then, real quickly, mention about Friday, September 22nd, the stand down, our event services did advertise that event, and again, it is 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM this Friday.
Thank you.
No comment.
Quick update for you, Councilman Durio. Staff's already met with the lady that had a $200 water bill, they did determine that there was a spike in usage, so we're going to check for leaks on our property, put on a payment plan, and if there are leaks, then we'll adjust the bill for her.
Thank you. I'm sorry, no comments, Mayor.
No comment, Mayor.
Well, and I, I wanted, and I appreciate, Ms. Councilman Durio saying that, and Todd, and certainly for people out there, if you feel like your water bill has increased, you certainly want to reach out to the city, because if there is a leak, they will mitigate that and work with you and, and reduce your bill if they find that, you know, it wasn't something you used. And on the conservation stage three, we must remember that it's not raining. It's not as hot, so hopefully that will reduce the amount of the ground shifting, but that also has to do with just dry conditions, so it will continue. And until we get more rain, we just have to realize that this is going to be an ongoing challenge, and as, as City Manager Williams has pointed out, from working in the hill country, they stay in that year-round, even in the wintertime, because they can still have problems. So hopefully, we'll be getting out of it in, in the coming weeks, and I know that we all look forward to that. I also want to say that my wife and I recently went to dinner at the park, had a wonderful dinner, the, the food was good, I'm excited at the success of it, and I know that, you know, having successful nightlife in, in new parts of town, it can be challenging for neighborhoods, and I applaud Councilman Turner, Councilman Durio, and I'd certainly be glad to participate, because, you know, we want people's concerns heard, and there's usually going to be a middle ground, and when people violate the law, they're violating the law. It's not the responsibility of a, of a restaurant and, or, and bar that, for, it doesn't fall on them, it falls on the people that are responsible, and we just need to make sure that we come up with ways to successfully enforce that, keep the neighborhood safe. up with ways to successfully enforce that, keep the neighborhood safe. I'm excited about the veteran transportation this Friday, and the fact that we're going to be looking at, for future possibilities there, and as I heard Assistant City Manager Boone talk about, and hearing about that and the future from council, and agree about separating the parks and recreation committees, and we do have the new proclamation guidelines will go into effect on October 1st, and much like the naming rights, we just want everybody to understand that there's a level playing field, how do you go about doing it, it would be the same, and you can make application for it online as well, and there's recognitions and other options if you don't meet the qualifications for the proclamation. And also, on October 1st, citizens, which has seemed to already happen, will only be speaking at the beginning of council meetings, and I appreciate that, and I know that many people that have spoke left during the council meetings, so I think that's working it out well, and I see that Councilman Durio would like to say something else.
You reminded me of something, excuse me, my brain is 61 years old, but my wife and I had lunch at the park on Saturday, and we thoroughly enjoyed it, awesome hamburger, I really enjoyed it, and also, we attended Flow Fest Saturday, and we really enjoyed that also, it was a great turnout. Thank you.
Yeah, many wonderful city events, and that was a huge success, it was a sellout, and so another successful event by the city of Beaumont, and I just, at this point, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.